Moving on. Councilman O'Neil, you spoke today.
Thank you.
I have a lovely for the library this evening.
I have a quick feeling that they had a good kickoff to their celebration program. Was well attended. They had a good event.
Thank you. We'll go back to school. Thank you. So we'll move to the website redesign. I'm happy to report that we are making progress with our contractor revise. We had a Zoom meeting with them last week and we have a plan as far as what they needed from us. Photographs, design ideas, and we'll get back to us in a couple of weeks with the next phase. So we are finally moving forward, happy to report with that. And we'll continue to give updates. Any questions or any input?
Any idea on how long it will be till like go live?
I think there'll be more as we give more updates from the revise. If they have, they will put flame together. If they have not scheduled one already, I don't know.
Do you have a thought we have?
I haven't seen any yet, no.
So we'll get one, that's a great question.
Yeah, I think they have a photograph by week three to have to come.
All right, and now open up the discussion with the committee on the council chamber AV upgrades. And it's not just AV, it's what does this stage need from my perspective to help the citizens who are in person and the citizens who are streaming us and watching us later in this body to have a better experience? And we know there's equipment here, cameras, microphones, lighting, all of that. So we started the discussion, our manager, Mrs. Aslieta, and so we started that discussion. We've already done some work on that. But at this stage, I would like to get input from the committee and from council on ideas. Tonight, open discussion or, you know, ideas if you can, you can send them to me. But anything off the top of your head, some experience with this body here?
I think just, I think what you're doing, making sure that we can record and make sure that it goes out right away. I know Kyle was talking about having a screen out there so we don't turn around.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that would be good too, but just making sure that we have that capacity to get the video out soon right away.
Some maybe, some type of monitor, it doesn't have to be, you know, just some option to look at, you know, block the public's view.
Right.
Definitely a higher quality video.
Yes, the audio.
And audio, so that people can see and understand what's going on on YouTube videos. And streaming capability, you know, record, and usually upload to YouTube.
I have some professional contacts that will give me free advice, we know that's worse sometimes, but I'm hoping to get some of their input as well as any of this project forward. And I don't have a timeline on that, but we will have one soon. But your input was important, it is important.
We'll fix that issue too.
Yeah.
I think something to cater when the mics are live.
Yes, yes. Red light green mic.
Yeah. Senator Miller and Councilman Anthony both sent me contact information. I reached out to both of them. When we have something a little more in the form of what we're looking for, I think then we'll call them in and maybe get them some prices. Right now, it's a general basis of what Third Element created for us is what we're basing things on, so, and I think we're just going to grow from there. And then once we have everything figured out what we want to do, then we can go for bids and get prices, total prices as to what it is. But it's an ease of system is what we're looking for and how, what, how many bells and whistles we want to put on that.
And then we were, over budget, sorry, when is the budget writing for this project?
Using, using ARPA funds. I mean, this is. I, we were looking at in the neighborhood, the quote that I got from Third Element for that system of neighbor designing, which was a very kind of robust system, was around thirty-five thousand dollars. That included the television in the back.
Was that something we budgeted for or is that just?
It's something that we, when we read the lines that we were looking at getting these ARPA funds, that was something we, that was the first thing that we wanted to be able to do that. If we have to go back into a COVID situation or in a pandemic situation, that's going to allow us to basically run the meetings from wherever we're at.
Well, that was my question, are we still talking about having council members and other experts here participate remotely?
If we, if we can do that, yes. And the problem that we run into is with Silver Spring found, I know Silver Spring actually found this out the hard way. When they had that, there was the delay because we were, they were transmitting out one and it was going to California and then coming back. And someone was watching it from someplace else. So you have a technical, technological delay that really can interrupt the flow and the appearance of a meeting.
But I know that I've been involved in many, many meetings, and that's have many organizations that have, do not have this issue, that they have resolved this issue. So the technical effects certainly is.
It's a long movie song.
I think we have to build it into the system and the architecture needs to be robust enough to handle the traffic. Those are some difficult tasks.
The gentleman that I put out, he's a borough resident and they volunteered to come in and help you with ideas.
Okay.
So you can ask him if they'd be able to.
Okay.
Also, I'm here with the other people as well.
Yep.
It's important that I do what I've achieved.
Right.
Let's go to make sure it lasts.
I will, we're going to do it, I'll be honest with you.
Make sure it lasts.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
That's it. Moving on to clearly, you can like development council.
I think council lotion paper. So if we could, and by Rebecca here, please come forward and give us the highlights of her report, always interesting.
Thank you. Well, the copy of my report, I think we need to have IT issues, so I've got the color report and the logo weird and that at the top, we don't have another new logo. The first point, first thing I want to talk about was the project, two projects that are neighboring property sixty-two and sixty-four West Main Street. Sixty-two was Cafe sixty-two a number of years ago. There's a new tenant there, I mentioned her last month. She's done a lot of work to the interior and has painted the exterior, added some flower box, so it has a new door there. That's an about-face brand that we're working on. The property next to it is owned by Pam Fleck, that's sixty-four West Main Street. Interesting color of the door, it was painted a number of years ago. The woodwork around it is practically raw, the paint's been peeling for years and years, the paint at the top of the building, the roof line, the dentals, there's more work there, very little paint left on that. That would be a Cumberland Street View project, it qualifies because there are five residential units there, that's the minimum. It does not qualify for about-face, but we met with her last week and are hopeful that she will be receptive to a project there that would address a number of issues. So it's not, we have the money, you have an application, you're in like Flynn, that's not how that works. They have to be agreeable to addressing all of the code violations and any safety concerns there, as well as the aesthetics. So that planner box would need to be remedied in a big way. The Covenant House, you know, has closed, the property is for sale, we've had a number of people for that, questioned and taken a look at it. Dad's Garage, Burger and Grill House, my favorite, has a new owner. That person is from mechanic care, who plans to keep it as is for the long term. So that's a good, we can retain that business. Kelly's Corner, that's the strip plaza that has Giderelli's and Happy Garden Medicine Shop, that is under contract, we'll settle later this month. The owner indicated they want to put a nail salon in the one available unit, those units are divisible. We now have, in twenty-two, we have added four, count them, four, brown eyelash businesses on West Main Street, within a couple of blocks, and that doesn't include a couple of salons that were there before. There along those railroad avenue that offer that same service, so I think we're good there. And there are two new businesses that are coming to Legacy Park, they're both eateries, one is Luna Italian Cuisine and the other is Down to Earth Cafe, both look to open this summer. You mentioned the deadline extension for the earth plant, thank you for doing that. Today day, the Housing and Redevelopment Authorities will be there, they'll stop by our booth. And I have a question related to the crosswalk. Are they painted or are they thermoplastic or some combination?
Which, which ones?
Specifically the one at York.
The one at York is a, is where they actually ground out asphalt, mix it with paint and then put it down as individual bricks. The ones at Main and Market Street, when UGI did the new gas lines, they put in the thermoplastic ones, they don't match the rest of the others.
So the one at York, I asked because the crosswalk, the paper, the filler papers are still there, but the white line is pretty much.
That was a, that was, that wasn't thermoplastic, that was a paint, so.
So if someone was interested in remedying those areas, those couple areas specifically, I noticed that at Elmwood and Shepherdstown Road too. Would they be painted or would they be thermoplastic?
Those were, it depends on if they want to save out the school project.
Right.
I'd have to pull that grant to see what they were, but Elmwood and Shepherdstown are paint. Had not get away with the one at Elmwood and Market Street because it was a mid-block crosswalk. It went to someone's driveway, didn't go with a sidewalk. The ones at Main and, or Market and Marble are paint. The ones at, around Broad Street, Broad and Keller, were thermoplastic.
So if the borough was going to do these, would the borough, would, they would paint?
We would paint, yes.
But you wouldn't do that thermoplastic?
No, we don't have the equipment to do thermoplastic. And that, and getting those people, when they have certain conditions to put that stuff down.
Are they interchangeable? So if they were, if they were thermoplastic but not, I guess on K-Box or school, it would have been thermoplastic?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Before you step away, quick question. On page one, third item, after the Museum Association, did they receive any grant monies or is that being funded out of their, their funds?
All of the things under about-face are projects that are being considered for about-face in those applicants.
Right, so my question is, is wonderful, we're going to see some additional sprucing up with the Museum Association, is there any word on the lovely freight cars that we have rusting away in the middle of our town?
Well, we're due for a talk about that.
We are, yeah, I don't know if anyone else on council would like to weigh in on this, but you know, especially now that the days are longer, the sun is out, the condition of that car is deteriorating rapidly. And I'm curious to know whether codes had any input or something like that. It's a question that really should be discussed. I think at very least, convey that who's responsible for it. That would be the Chamber of Commerce promoting.
Don't grow a property, but it's a chamber.
And it's not a, like, it's coded as a railroad car.
It's coded under railroad car.
That's the difficult part.
So that's a question maybe the solicitor to find out whether or not that code is appropriate or should be reconsidered.
Well, if the, is, this is where, when we would have to have somebody come in and determine that it was a dangerous structure, I mean, that.
Does that have a codes department?
Yeah.
Okay, so if the solicitor determined that codes had some type of jurisdiction there, I think conveying to the chamber that having something that that looks not awful, they have simply refused to address on borough property related. That's, that's embarrassment.
Do they own, so what part of it do they own, are they the owner of the car?
The owner of the car.
Okay, so then do they lease the ground from us?
No. There was, there was an agreement many, 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 many years ago, apparently, I think long before any of us were ever.
Is it a handshake agreement or was it a handshake agreement or agreement agreement?
I have the slightest clue, I've never seen it, I don't, couldn't tell. All I know is it's borough property and it's the Chamber of Railroad Car.
Is it used for this stuff?
It's a, it's a.
Is it used for graduate headquarters, is it being used now actively?
Oh, yes. I presume that all the volunteers into that car, where you could give yourself a concussion, no rush. Not when you die, shut your society, cut yourself a limb, rusting car. And not for nothing, well, the state vice on the board of that organization and they simply refuse to look at this issue. And I wonder if council shouldn't gently say, we think you should take a look at this issue. You know, there have been a lot of discussions about public funds available and convey to the car to the Museum Association for refurbishment, restoration, and there have been a lot of attempts to forward this, to advance this issue, but they've gone nowhere.
It in the heart, it has the discretion of finding some railroad folks to help restore it, but it's not gone very far. It is, it is an expensive project and it's difficult, I think you have to find someone that has some niche, but there are people that specialize in doing that and I think they live above us in North.
Not only that, but the ownership has everything to do with access to those funds.
Right.
So I, I really would like to have another discussion related to that and a couple other properties. This is a perennial question that we get and, and you know, probably a year or so ago, maybe two years ago, when we were working on the, the county was looking at the fee to include on mortgages that were recorded, we had that passed, so we have a fund now that addresses blighted properties, a demolition fund, and a person was very upset that I had suggested that that property was blighted, but it has all the hallmarks and a few more of just that.
I agree.
So if, I would love to further that discussion.
So I guess if any council members have thoughts about that, shared now or in the near future, then we can have a further discussion at the committee level and then maybe convey our thoughts, our thoughts.
So when I became, when I was asked to serve on that board early 2000, the very first thing that I did was I found the mayor and I said to the mayor, John Anthony, and I'd like to serve on the board, what would you like the chamber to do? He took me outside of the hardware store, pointed at the building and said, paint that car. That was very good, there wasn't any.
I think I said, paint it and paint.
Put a little hair in there too. But the point was that it didn't need brush repair and that I think is a very, it took us, I think, about six weeks to find somebody who's willing to paint that metal because it's, it's hard, but it came out very well. The, the repair piece, I think, is the part that's going to be the real struggle for that.
So we have offered funding, Redevelopment Authority has offered funding, I have approached the chamber numerous, numerous times. The executive director of the Redevelopment Authority has asked us on the chamber board as well. I think the time is now.
Agreed, and we're having some redevelopment and not far from there in our town center and we're talking about the possibility, I understand, we didn't say we, but the Renaissance is talking about the possibility of having a walkway very near that location as well and vision is what they're having to say. And the fact that it's on borough property, I think, certainly gives us the.
Yeah. I think it's a discussion we need to have, yeah.
Thank you very much for that, you are charming as always. The planning commission will move on report, there was no meeting, so we'll move, that was the report, Harvey is on.
I missed the meeting last night, Roger, if there's anything to record?
They passed a, or they recommended approval for the window replacement on West Main Street, that would be on the agenda for the next, next meeting. And they didn't, they're trying to set up a meeting to discuss the changes that they want to make to the hardware.
It worked really hard on that, so I'm proud of how good work they've done.
Wonderful, thank you. DM, give me a short report, Councilman Anderson.
I also missed that meeting because I was tied up. James, is there anything that you'd like to share?
Since last I was here, I had talked to President Miller and Roger about the American Rescue Fund and whether the partnership was going to apply, at the time I said no. But we've changed our mind, our thinking on that and Roger knows just that we will either apply for that grant. We are, we are plowing ahead full speed toward Community Day and are looking forward to an expanded event. I mean, we're going to have crackers, we're going to have jury artists, we're going to have more people in that direction, as well as local vendors and so on. And we hope we'll be a good steward of the faith, the borough is good enough to run that day, it'd be wonderful.
You did a good job last year, we'll see you about it off this year, thank you.
We did have a question come in from somebody about the sidewalk, was that, has that been addressed?
Do we have a plan, James, for the sidewalk?
Well, it will be patched, in the meantime, we, and we're going to patch it because it's going to be replaced entirely within a year or so. And we have a spray can of orange paint in our storage area that is going to be showing up on the sidewalk too.
Thank you.
They did it, they did a smaller one, yeah.
And I spoke to the highway department about the potential, put something in that to try to fill it in, to make it a little bit less of a depression as what's there. They're working on trying to figure out when they can get in there, least amount of traffic to dump something in that hole.
Yeah.
So they're, they're working on it.
Do we have an idea of timeline and there's a path basically of fill, you're framing it, filling the depression, do we have a timeline on that? Understanding that jubilee is coming and that there have been previous conversations that it was hoped that council that that would be completed prior to your graduate day?
Oh, it'll be, we'll have it done, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to have it done here as soon as possible. So the guys are tied up right now, pool and, and potholes and all the other ventures, so as soon as we get that taken care of, because there's a lot of work, I've got to do it in parks too, so they'll be going back and forth through there with loads of stuff.
Anyone have anything?
Thank you, committee chief for watering the grass, we appreciate it.
Yes, thank you publicly for ice treated up.
It's very few people, but it's fun, Roger. Thank you for asking.
Probably many more acts in the future, don't we?
I would, yes.
Did you have to ask, well, thanks for somebody remembering it too?
All right, we should thank Sarah Agarson for getting it off.
Did you muddy grass?
Oh, yes, myself did.
She did. And when we're on that side, I'm lucky to have a comprehensive plan.
I haven't heard anything, has, has anybody, I think the last thing they were talking about this question is what to formulate, I have not heard anything from GPD. Did anybody pull together what they were, what their questions they were looking for for the potential survey?
I haven't seen anything.
So it's basically silence, I think, at this point, we haven't, we haven't really heard anything. Let's see what we can do for next time around and try again, that's the end of the report, thank you.
Moving on, property trust and recreation, Councilman Martin.
So I was not able to attend the main meeting for the record, the duty meeting will be next week and I will be there. I don't have a report from Councilman Cooper, from the Shade Tree or the EAC. And moving on to items for discussion. The proposal for the pool feasibility study, I know we have a packet, that's not that one. We did get a packet, didn't we? Yes. Yes, yes. So anything on there?
Two of them, I did a spreadsheet to help try to grade as these were looking through. I went through mine, I did one for myself. So one group that's on there actually was the one that did Hampton Townships Pool, we got, I sent out seven. One of them said right off the bat, they couldn't, they couldn't help us, so the six that are on the list, on that spreadsheet, three of them didn't submit and I confirmed with them that they were not going to submit, so. But the other three are pretty decent proposals, looked at them, they hit pretty good on the topics that we wanted them to. There are some differences between the products, the final product they want to provide and their process for going through what they're doing. Some of them have some really good experience, some of them are not municipal experience, they're more water park and commercial type, so take a look at them, see what you think.
Just something that the engineer would help us also make a recommendation or typically or?
Then two engineers are, but two of them are mostly an engineer and Densky, provided actually two of, there's two of them that didn't submit, were provided by the engineer, so.
What, the specifications and that, did you provide, did he, did the?
He reviewed, he actually reviewed the proposal before we sent it out, yes.
I think we. I think they have extra sort of our mind.
Absolutely.
He has it, he can look at it though.
Yeah, that was a pretty cool thing there. Fourteen million, James. Can we change that up quick?
Update on the pool slide repair.
The slide repair was done, the inspector was in and looked at it, he said there was a few things that we needed to watch. I did send out my inspection report, we're working on getting the stair treads that he pointed out, taking care of those. And we should be, hopefully we have that done by the end of this week and we can get slides open this weekend. But he did make a recommendation that we need to look at that slide, that's starting to, the fiberglass is really starting to strip through and it needs, something needs addressed on it, so, in the future.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. And I do have one item that I wanted to bring to council attention. I received a correspondence from a citizen that she took her grandson to Coda Park, I will read this. "I took my grandson to Coda Park last week and found it to be in terrible shape. My grandson tripped over a clump of weeds in the play area, fell and scraped his knee. The park appears totally neglected and I want to report these problems." So I'm going, going to take the correspondence to the red board meeting next week and have a discussion with them on what could be done in park maintenance because it is an issue.
We've got no part-time people that are employed this year, it's part-time. So it's the highway guys that are trying to do all of this stuff. It's just not, there's not enough hours in the day.
Yes, we have church volunteers that I know in the past, we've had some groups step up to just help themselves, maybe we need to lead up some church groups.
Adopt a park.
Adopt a park.
I like it.
The rec was talking about doing a, pick a miner, not pick a miner, Cogier, they're doing a field day at Cogier where they want us to bring out some mulch, they'll spread it, they'll take, put it around and stuff like that, so, I mean, we can, we can work on that and try to get that taken care of, so.
We should have a church challenge and maybe tell the churches to juice up our little words and juju them all up and mulch and paint and stuff, because there's, there's a lot of stuff that can be done, so I happen to think we might have some connection with the churches, so do you think we could throw down and have a church challenge?
Well, I think that's a possibility, because churches love to compete like that.
Yeah, we have to think so too. I know the parish is a period church, but they're just not going to, they're not going to do it.
They're in private, so we can't do it.
I think they should, we could take that back, yeah, first night without them, those two, I think we could back and do it.
Ben, ask real quick, Dr. Drake, you had contact with Diacom, I think they came in, Diacom, their day service, don't you like?
No, don't like.
Have they reached out to you again this year? That was in June.
That was here, if it's been in June, I. That was, yeah, it had been in June, I, I can check with them, but usually they would have been in contact with me already if I-
Are they still, are they still over here?
I don't know.
Because they're not doing it.
They're working remotely?
I thought so, because I remember my apartment was totally empty. But they can drive it to their house, just like, they go up to their house on the deck service.
Because they work remotely doesn't mean they can't volunteer.
I had a quick question before you, question on the day on the, the day on the board.
Um, I am not sure, I have not spoke to Coach Blumack about the shed, I, beyond, we're looking at colors, I know that, that was a lot of time I talked to him, you were looking at colors for the shed.
We figured out a way to get it in there, taking down the middle of the fence, we did speak to Coach Blumack about potentially waiting until the end of the season to do it, because of tearing down fence to get the thing in there, it's twenty feet long, fourteen feet wide, and a big section of perimeter fence is gonna have to be removed to get that in there. We met with the manufacturing company, they made some changes to the actual building itself, they moved one of the, they opened the doors off the weather side and they put it on the protected side, so they're aware of that, but right now, it's just a matter of waiting for the manufacturer to get it and decide when we're gonna get, when we're gonna get it delivered.
So it does or does not have anything to do with waiting to take the fence down for action?
It's, that's what we have to, that's the final thing we have to discuss with, with Mr. Blumack.
Do you have anything else? Does anybody have any further questions?
Are you still looking for parks people, when they start, they're searching for-
It's not rudders, let's put it that way. I have a range that I can pay, but I gotta be careful with the contract that I have is one fifty eight, I don't go too far into that, what they're, in the range they're doing. Can pay probably up to maybe fourteen to fifteen dollars an hour, part-time, twenty-nine hours a week, so, but, I can't compete with, I can't compete with rudders and a few of the other places around here, but, so.
Do you have it out there right now, anywhere, looking, websites?
We contacted, contacted Hack, we contacted the MoTeck School, Curtis has contacted Hack for some of his people too, to see what he can give for the sewer plant. The kids that we know, we've gone through different places.
What's the age limit?
Uh, I need, they gotta be, they should be at least eighteen.
Oh.
To be, for our insurance, to drive the vehicles and stuff like that.
Can you put it on Indeed, or?
Indeed, I don't know, to do that on Indeed, for every applicant you get, and there's, the problem that we're having here is people are applying to keep unemployment benefits going.
I think there are some ways to use Indeed that are free, but church did.
Yep.
So, how are we doing that?
We'll try it, I mean, we'll try the, we'll try the Indeed, we're going through Facebook and a few other ones to see if that will help, word of mouth, we're trying to see, everybody that comes in, we're asking if they wanna, you know, if they know anybody, it's just one of those things that, you know, I mean, we could, we're having trouble finding part-time people for in the office too, so. But that's, that's another thing that Scott Frager and I talked about, he's having the same issue in Lower, not Lower Allen Township, so, and Ray Palmer said the same thing today at a county meeting, that they're having issues in Silver Spring also, so.
I think we need to look at, if it's not a job board, a free job board.
Keep trying, that's all we can do, I mean, we could put the word out there that we're looking for people.
We sent the information to the churches?
I'm good.
Right. Moving on, Personnel Committee, Councilman Agarson.
So we are continuing to meet, but I have no public report as of this time.
Thank you. Bring us to our nationalism comment period, are there any solutions to comment?
Just a brief thank you for addressing the concerns that I and others have brought to the table here. I know government moves slowly, but we're not going anywhere, so we will continue to monitor and ensure that progress is made, and we want to be a part of it, thank you.
Thank you too.
Robin Agarson? Sarah gets to hear this later on, so she can just leave that and relax. She, is there gonna be a chance that we can have a police car parked at Memorial Park this summer? You've done it other years, and it's just been so effective.
Park security is what I'm working on right now.
Okay.
About four applications.
We like the park this week, the pool this weekend, you know, Jackal was coming to there, the years that they, they move it, like sometimes it's, you know, up toward the pavilion, sometimes it's back by football field.
Park security is actually in it, in the walk around.
Mm-hmm. But we don't want, anyone can look, because he does go over to the other park, but the car would be there, and you could see somebody be coming in, they'd spot that car and they just slow down.
Yeah, you would.
So that would be great, and the answers were fabulous, that made a big, huge difference over there. I went to a meeting with the county associate, and she stated that this ARP money is available, and you have four weeks to apply for it. I'm begging you, you know, I don't know who's writing the grants, I don't know who's asking for it, I don't know, I know somebody was hired, grant writer specifically, to go after that money, and, you know, she said it's there, it's coming in, and the linesman extended, so I'm begging you to go for that money. I really take exception that you are going to the volunteers on the rec board for park maintenance. This has been going on for thirty years. Park maintenance is important, your rec board volunteers have told you that over and over again. Volunteers have dedicated thousands of hours to our parks over the last three decades, and here you sit and say, "Well, we're gonna take it to our volunteers." That's not acceptable, you know you have this budget, you know you need this, you're saying we're the street sweeper, you know you need this stuff. And I come in here thirty years later, and it's like, "Oh wait, we need park maintenance? We need a street sweeper? Come on." I'm, I'm a little frustrated with that. The other thing, and Kyle knows this, I've been frustrated with this for three decades, the website, and I appreciate it so much, but a lot of the issues and the problems that you discuss here, the answer is the website. We could purchase more of the honor banners, we could have people take care of them, if we had a website that said, "This is what the need was, the park maintenance." Sarah's right, there are groups that will come out and help clean up the parks. Rec board volunteers have done it in the past, but it has to be on the website. There's programs on other websites, and I've talked about this for three decades, adopt a fire hydrant in the wintertime. Neighbors will, can go in on the software, say, "I have a fire hydrant, I will dig it out." Mr. Thomas, there's up and down the streets, digging up fire hydrants every winter, every winter. Park cleanup day is clean storm drains. How hard is that? That's a public education campaign that should be going on, on the Facebook page and on the website, every single, every, all of the time. People need to go out and clean up their storm drains to help the flooding, so it's not always Roger getting the phone call, but the streets flooded. Sarah, and Sarah has waited out in front of her house that they bought on the corner of Frederick and Market Street, up to her size, in pajamas, to clean out that stinking drain. So, this, these traffic signs are three thousand dollars. I believe most of the, you know, people serving night will give you three thousand dollars to buy a solar, solar sign to put up. You laugh, put it on the website.
Yes.
You know, the people that have had, how many kids have been hit this year in town? It's not a laughing matter.
Mrs. Agarson, thank you for your ideas, your three minutes has-
Oh, okay, well, it's been years, Kyle.
Any other suggestions, sir?
Sorry, excuse me, Lee Clam, ULLI, climb, and I'm a twenty-two learner, I'm sorry I'm not in Mechanicsburg in Upper Allen. This is my first borough meeting ever, probably in twenty-three years, which I appreciate your work behind the scenes, those of us that take it for granted. I also am a state employee who does show up at work, so you can leave this at me, I work for the Department of Transportation, which does actually send inmates if asked, asked to the community to help with municipal projects, called CWP workers, by the way. I really came up with a say as the chair of the Mechanicsburg West Shore Prop Walk, and you may not know that that's been in this area in Mechanicsburg for, this will be the fifty-first year, and a hundred percent of its funds go to feed the hungry both locally through New Hope Ministries and Mechanicsburg Wheels on Wheels, and globally through Church World. And I just really want to say thank you for approving a special permit application so that we can walk around the perimeter of Memorial Park. I was always, I've been chairing this for now four years, and always fearful when we would cross streets, and the streets of Mechanicsburg for our walk, because we've had a lot of kids, especially from the Harrisburg Korean Presbyterian Church, always afraid that someone's gonna get hit, and so at our liaison committee meeting, we actually met in the pavilion in Memorial Park, and said, "Hey, here's an idea, that we could have this walk here be safe," and the committee was like, "Oh, that would be so wonderful, we want to keep it in Mechanicsburg." So just want to express my thanks to this body, and we look forward to being centered here for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other sources, Tom? Saying, moving on to other business?
No, I have none.
Nothing, David?
No.
Nothing?
None.
I think we're good.